Are you ready down there? It is 7:01 and I welcome you all, this is March 7th, to the regular meeting of the Wald Lake Consolidated School District. Could you please stand for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we start on our agenda, the Golden Apple Awards, and I will defer to Dr. Bernia.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, good evening. Jenny Parker, where are you? Come on up to the most comfortable spot in the room. Right there on the WL if you don't mind. Thank you very much. Tonight's first Golden Apple recipient is Jenny Parker, substitute teacher and coach at Wald Lake Northern High School. Although her nominator wishes to remain anonymous, Jenny was recommended because she is a team player who promotes and supports the abilities of every student and staff member. Jenny is never standing still. You are right now, you're doing a great job. She continuously looks for ways to help others and improve current practices. Whether it be in the classroom, working with students, on the track coaching or supporting staff, Jenny finds new ways to reach students and streamline procedures. She is energetic and would do anything to help a student or staff member. Her energy and positive attitude are contagious. When she is not needed as a sub during the day, Jenny goes to teachers and asks what she can do to help them. Greg Diamond, principal at Wald Lake Northern, supported Jenny's nomination, sharing Mrs. Parker's commitment to our school, staff, and community is evident in all the extra things she does to help make Northern such a special place. Mrs. Parker has taught in just about every department within our building, including AP classes and world language classes. Even when teaching these challenging courses, she excels and, most importantly, the students continue their studies without stopping their important curriculum while the teacher is out. She always has a smile for us and is well-respected among the staff and students here. Jenny, thank you for all you've done and all you continue to do for the students and families of Wald Lake Northern. It's our honor to recognize you this evening.
Let me get some holiday.
Our second Golden Apple winner, Diane Kindervater, could not join us this evening. She is also from Wald Lake Northern High School and her nominator also wished to remain anonymous, but she was recommended because of her tireless work to improve the lives of the staff by going above and beyond to help them with their job and their lives. A good school secretary takes care of you at work, but also takes care of you as a person. And Diane is one of those people. She greets everyone with a smile, she asks how she can help, and she just takes on every job, big and small. So I know that we all congratulate Diane and thank her for her work.
So the next item on our agenda is the meritorious budget award recognition, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Bernia.
This is a very special year, thank you, Mr. President. The Association of School Business Officials recognizes school districts that go above and beyond in their reporting requirements and their fiscal practices. And it's every year, as the community knows, as the board knows, we participate in an annual third-party audit. This is above and beyond that practice. And for years now, we have been fortunate in Wald Lake to be recognized for what we call the meritorious budget award, but this year is a special year because this is the 20th consecutive year that we've received this award for our commitment to fiscal responsibility and the work that we do. And the driver of that for the past 20 years, all the way back to the original application, is Terry Less. And so... And so Terry now is the Assistant Superintendent for Business Services at Oakland Schools, contributing to the work at the county level. But I asked Terry to be here tonight, we had always intended to recognize Terry and her entire business team for their commitment and their hard work and to thank her for her dedication. And so thank you for coming back, thank you for being here, and thank you for your commitment to Wald Lake Schools and all you've done to ensure 20 consecutive meritorious budget awards.
Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, Student Leadership Presentation. And again, I will defer to Dr. Bernia.
Thank you very much. The desire of the board has been to hear directly from the leadership students at our high schools. And so the team from Wald Lake Western has the courageous principal, Mr. Hampka, who said, "Not only will we do it, we want to go first." So friends, you have your principal to thank for that. But he said that people from Wald Lake Western are bold, and I think that this is another example of that. So I'd like to welcome the students from Wald Lake Western up to the podium and talk to us a little bit about what you're doing.
Hi, everyone, thank you for having us. My name is Alicia Fernandez, I am a senior, and this is my third year involved in student leadership.
Hello, everyone, I am Clachi Amadi, and this is my first year being involved in student leadership, and I am a junior.
Hello, my name is Bona Najimova. I am currently junior at Wald Lake Western, and it's my second year at Wald Lake Western High School.
Hello, I am Brana Hickson, I'm a junior at Wald Lake Western, and this is my first year in student leadership.
Hi, I'm Abby Selectman, I'm a junior, and this is my first year in student leadership.
Hi, I'm Eden Levy, I'm a junior, and this is my second year in student leadership.
I just want to take a minute to say thank you for the Board of Education, and we are very glad to be here and part of this meeting. And we are feeling very honored and very special to be and standing in front of President and a bunch of other members, who's watching us. I'm a little bit nervous, don't mind me, please. Okay, okay, student leadership. Wald Lake Western Student Leadership Class focuses on promoting engagement and service within our school community. Leaders must have desired to improve their school environment throughout carefully orchestrated activities. Throughout this year-long course, students will gain better understanding of group dynamics, communication, and project plannings. And we do other bunch of fundraisings, and we try our best to help and like support other charities. And I will let Clachi to keep the conversation.
All right, all right, so like any other class, we have four marking periods. Here are the four we have a period of the day. The first marking period I'm going to go over is marking period one, which is making connections and team building, because that's when we all like meet each other, like, especially me as the first person coming in, like for my first year. It was great to like make connections and do activities with these people and like get to know them. So like we really got to know them, like do activities, we call them mixers. We used to do them every Monday. And we also do team-building activities because we help build the homecoming, do the pink-out, all of that. And like that just helps you get to know people so much better and so much more, and you know, really make connections with these people. In marking period two, we have creating effective presentations, speaking techniques, and presenting. We learned a lot about how to create an effective presentation, like the one you're seeing right now, and how to get people to learn and how for us to be able to make a good presentation that'll engage the audience. We even had a presentation party in our class, and we made some great ideas. Like mine was about the conspiracy theory that birds might not be real. And in marking period three, we have setting goals, creating proposals, and executing our visions. In marking period, we've created a lot of new events, like multiple events that I can't wait for us to execute and put out. We're still working on it a bit, but it's really exciting. And in marking period four, we focused a bit on group dynamics, so you know, growing more as a group, building more, and just finishing out the year strong. Okay, our grading method, because this is a class, at the end of the day, we do have a grading method and we do have grades. And we will, are graded on our like contribution to the school events and activities and the impact we have on the high school and like, you know, Western itself. We're graded on our daily contributions to class activities, discussions, and our level of engagement within the curriculum at the end of the day.
All right, so to kind of break down what we learned, so to start, we have many class discussions, whether that's small groups or as a whole class. Sorry, so we as a whole, we as a whole are able to understand group dynamics from all the group discussions we have. And as Clachi mentioned, we have many team-building activities, which we call mixers, which allow us to build lifelong friendships and better our communication in and outside of the classroom. We also have collaborative event planning, which helps us gain understandings of marketing, public relations, and detailed-oriented plans. We also have formal event execution, which helps us with management techniques. And lastly, we have networking and collaborating with student leaders around the state, which this allows us to earn scholarships and awards and to seek new events that we could bring to Wald Lake Western.
So now I'm going to talk about the LVC conferences. So the LVC conferences are typically a bi-monthly conference where select students within student leadership here at Western are given the opportunity to work with others. So this is very cool. I had the opportunity to attend the LVC conference that we co-hosted with Wald Lake Central back in November. It was super cool because we made blankets that went to a charity for those in need. And then it's also super cool because we get to learn more about what other students are doing in their student leadership classes in our conference. So like Waterford Mott was there, Waterford Kettering. And so they present their ideas as well as us. And so we can go back to our class and be like, okay, so which ideas do we think we might want to implement to improve Wald Lake Western? And now on to our MASC leadership conference. So this is our state's conference, this year I also had the opportunity to attend it. It was in Grand Rapids, there was over 1,000 students from across the state. It was amazing because there were so many students that we didn't, would not typically have the chance to interact with. Again, this is similar to the LVC conference in which we attend different presentations to learn what they do, to raise money within their student leadership class, and also for charity. And we got to go to so many presentations where they just, you know, talked about what they did that really works for their school, and we had the opportunity to present at states too. So it was a great opportunity for us to learn and see what people are doing around the state that we typically wouldn't have the chance to interact with.
Some of the achievements and awards that we received include the MASC and MAHS Star School Award, which we were presented with at the state's conference. And two of our leaders were also recognized at the award ceremony. I got the Unsung Hero Award, and Laney Bergmeyer was also Student of the Year. Our student showcase presentation on room service was chosen to advance from the regional conference to the state conference, which our E-Board got to present to the students.
So some of our projects at a glance is Pinkout, which is a huge community event. Over 2,000 community members kind of come and show up. It's one of the biggest events we have, and it's what we really take pride in because it represents such a huge part of the community. The next one is homecoming, and it's honestly another staple because you can't think about high school without thinking about homecoming. We really try to elevate it with, this year we had a miniature golf course, yard games, interactive photo booths, a 360 camera, and a really sick DJ. It was really cool. Yeah, and so a lot of these events are like our staples, and we try to elevate them every year. Our project at a glance, we promoted room service at states. It is a really big thing at our school. Basically, we set a budget, and then we purchase a bunch of food for our teachers and staff members, and we go around presenting it and like giving food to them. It's what they look forward to, I think, at the end of every month, and it's really nice to make their days better because students can be students, and food makes it better. And our You Matter and Charity Week, we host different activities so that way students can get hyped up and energized for these charities that we have. And we hosted a color run also, we really want to emphasize charity at Western.
Another super successful event we just had was Blizzard of Books. So this event, we collaborated with the NHS, which is National Honor Society. And what we did was we were able to collect over 7,000 books to donate to a nonprofit charity called Making Spirits Bright. And this event was super successful. We were able to get the whole entire student body engaged, so that was a super great event. And then an event coming up is Inclusion Week. And with this event, we are going to have an activity for the student body, and that's going to be Rochambeau, which is going to be a rock-paper-scissors tournament that the whole entire student body can play and get a chance to win cool prizes. All right, so, I don't, okay. Thank you so much for listening. You guys can go ahead and follow us on social media to stay up to date on different events, application, et cetera. Our platform is WLW Warrior Tribe. So if you guys have any other questions, feel free to ask, but we appreciate you guys for your time.
Any questions from our board? Gina? Ms. Levin?
Thank you all for being brave and coming out tonight to speak with us. You know, this is your opportunity to be in front of the board. So I'm going to ask you a question, and maybe one of you or all of you can speak to it. What can we do for you?
Way to put me on the spot. I'd say we're in pretty good hands, we have a very good admin team that's very supportive of everything that we want to push. So I can't think of anything on the spot, but I don't know if you guys... Yeah, we'll let you know, but we're in good hands, so we appreciate it.
Mr. Siegler.
First of all, I do want to thank you for coming. You know, I've always, I'm a little partial to Western because both of my children graduated from there. But I've known Western to be a very diverse, dynamic building. The students there have been trendsetters. There is a lot of friendship and long-term relationships that I have seen evolve from that with both of my children. And I want to thank you for that, and I just want to say, when you think birds might not be real, don't say that in Northern because we just approved a class on bird studies.
I've heard about that, I love it, and I want to join it, thank you.
Mr. Peterson. So a couple of things, first of all, I want to thank you, if you're aware or not, but we were with your principal last night, and Mrs. Kaplan, and Dr. Bernie and I. And we accepted an award on behalf of the district for our support of Hospitality House. And I am sure that many of you have been involved in helping Hospitality House. So we went and accepted that really on behalf of all the work that you as students do. So I want to thank you and make sure you know. So when you look on the website and you see that we received this, it's in part, big part, because of what you're doing. So thank you. A question I have, somebody mentioned a Star School Award. Could you tell me a little bit more about what that is and how you got it and why you achieved it?
We kind of had to go through an entire application process, our advisor really took the lead on that. So we weren't really involved in it, but she sent forward like some of the events that we did and things like that to be recognized by the state of Michigan, and we were accepted out of, I think they were like 60s schools, something like that.
All I can remember off the top of my head is like there's a list of criteria. I think you have had to have like a few charity events, and I think, I can't really remember the rest, but there's some criteria that we had to meet in order to qualify for that award. And when we went to the state's conference last year, we didn't get that award. So this year was a great opportunity for us to get that because last year we had a ton of amazing events that helped us with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Fernandez.
Thank you all for showing up today. I don't have anything super deep to say, but I did want to say, back in the day, those of us who weren't privileged enough to go to Western as part of our own education could not learn how to drive unless we did come to Western because Western was the only school that hosted driver's education. So when you're a kid and you want to drive and you're really ready for that step, that makes Western a very special place for some of us.
Any other? I do have a question. So are you representative of all, or are there more of you?
Yeah, so we have a class of like 29 students, this is like a fraction of it, so...
Because otherwise I was going to give you a high acclaim for all those efforts and all those areas. But either way, refer that back to the rest of your group. It's just mind-boggling, thank you. Okay, we'll move on, and next on the agenda?
Next is the Lakes Area Youth Assistance Annual Report, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lyons.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kaplan.
Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Van Lewen, who is our vice chair, and she's going to give you an update and a rundown on Lakes Area Youth Assistance.
What an act to follow. There's nothing that gives me more personal pleasure than seeing a group of students that are so poised and active. Lakes Area Youth Assistance, as many of you know, is an organization that was founded about 60 years ago through Oakland County Circuit Court, which is now the Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division. And the object of it was to try to intervene with students who needed some outside help but should not or did not qualify, or people felt uncomfortable that these particular students were being sent to court and having a court record. And so Youth Assistance was founded. And the county provides us with a caseworker. In the case of Lakes Area Youth Assistance, Mrs. Stacy Pessini is our caseworker. And she sends her regrets, she's had a death in the family, so she was unable to come tonight. She was going to be part of this presentation. So the Circuit Court provides us with a caseworker. We also have funding and support from especially the Wald Lake School District who provides us with some money and also facilities to operate from. We also are supported as, and I believe you all received our annual report, we also are supported by the Township of Commerce, by the city of Wald Lake, Wixom, Wolverine Lake, and of course, the Circuit Court. In addition to that, we have a volunteer board. And the volunteer board helps to maintain the office by hiring a professional who helps us as an office assistant. We also do fundraising so we can do supportive activities throughout the district. Our major fundraising event, which most of you are aware of, is The Taste of the Lakes, and I will talk about that. and I will talk about that in just a moment. This volunteer board also participates in the Shop with a Cop and Shop with a Hero event at both the Meyer in Commerce Township and the Meyer in Wixom, and those have been wonderful events. Last year, we serviced about 40 students at these locations, providing them with some opportunities to go out and shop. Meyer provides the money, we provide the officers and some of the Lakes Area support. We also have a program called Skill Building where we provide scholarships, I will say, to people who can, who otherwise could not afford to take guitar lessons, participate and pay to play, or possibly things like ballet and track and field and whatever it might be that they need assistance to be able to go to those classes. We also have an Adopt a Child program where, again, people with needs send us applications for items. Hereon Valley Hospital is extremely supportive in this. They have supported us by taking up to 80 of these youngsters, going out, doing some shopping at the holiday time. We collect all the items. Usually, it's been brought to this building, and from here, we distribute it to those families. That is a major event, and it's a fun one. And of course, Taste of the Lakes, which is our major fundraiser, which will happen next year, Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, at Edgewood Country Club. And again, that's an activity that many of you have participated in and are familiar with. We have a lot of fun. Mr. Siegler is one of our grandest supporters of that over the years. He loves our silent auction and has spent, well, I'm sure it's been... A lot over the years, supporting our efforts. One of the things that happens with the Taste of the Lakes is we have so many groups and organizations and businesses that support us in this effort. Our local PTAs contribute baskets for us. Our community leaders come and participate. We also have businesses that either give us cash donations or coupon certificates, items that we can auction off. So that is another one of our great, big efforts. One of the more important things, and the most important thing, of course, is the casework work. And Mrs. Passini, and I, before I address what she does, I'd like to thank Dr. Lyons for his role in this. He's her liaison in the district between these students that have needs and her services, and she's been very appreciative of their relationship and how they are able to work with these students and get them services, so I wanted to publicly thank him for that. Mrs. Passini, last year, had over 219 cases that she dealt with. This year already, she's got over 60. So in the first two months of this year, she's dealing with 60 cases. If this pace keeps up, it will be catastrophic for her. And to this end, we, as an organization, have been trying to put some pressure on the Circuit Court to say, "Help us. We need help." But like everyone else, our special ed department, anybody who's dealing with the need to hire people who are helping people with mental health or juvenile issues, we seem to have trouble finding these people. So if some of you are interested in the field or have the qualifications, please step up and apply for jobs. But what's been happening this year especially, and somewhat last year, is the cases that Mrs. Passini is dealing with are far stronger and more unusual than ever in the past. It used to be simple, I shouldn't say simple. It used to be things like the vaping and the shoplifting and the truancy, and now these cases are getting more extreme and more difficult, and it is an indication of the times, I believe, and sometimes that's a real difficult thing to deal with. So Youth Assistance is here. Our offices are in this building. We thank you as a board for your support and approving the contribution that the district makes to us. You will have the board members in front of you later in this meeting to recognize, and if I missed anything, Mrs. Kaplan, I'm sure you can fill us in. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Dr. Bernia?
Next is the Parent Advisory Committee Annual Update. Ms. Muir.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. The Wald Lake Consolidated Schools Parent Advisory Committee consists of parent representatives who have children receiving special education programs and services. Our president, Cory Hensley, will present an update on the PAC activities over the last year and their successful work in building an active and sustainable PAC. Ms. Hensley?
Good evening, thank you, Ms. Muir. Thank you, board and cabinet, for allowing me to be here this evening, again, annually to present to you on PAC, who we are, what we do. A little bit about me, I'm going to get personal. I don't usually do this, but this is why I'm here. That little boy, he's not little anymore, he's a teenager now, 13 years old, my son Jackson, is why I'm here, why I serve on PAC, and why I'm so passionate about what I do. So our agenda this evening, what is PAC? Give you a little bit of background information. I know we do have newer board members, so I want to make sure you are aware of who we are, what we do, our progress, and what we have coming up. Parent Advisory Committee. So the Michigan Department of Education, if you are not familiar, has what released documents called Family Matters, all related to special education. So if you're looking for information, what is a PAC? What is maybe FAP, if you've heard that? There's a lot of acronyms in education, especially special education. LRE, what is that? Not sure? You can Google MDE, Family Matters, and read about Parent Advisory Committee, so on and so forth. So Parent Advisory Committee, we have one in, here in Wald Lake, but it starts up the chain at the ISD. So I serve currently as chair of the Oakland Schools ISD as well, and I am fortunate in that role as well. But the state of Michigan requires that all ISDs have a PAC, and then it is recommended that local school districts also have a PAC as well. So we're fortunate in Wald Lake to have a PAC. We've had some up and downs, but we're fortunate, and I am working with Ms. Muir, collaborating in how we can grow our PAC and get it back to the way it was before COVID. So I recommend that you Google Family Matters through the Michigan Department of Ed to learn more. Who we are. Our mission statement is to increase awareness and best practices, and I think it's working, whether it be here, presenting at meetings, at board meetings, the activities that we do in the district. We are increasing awareness and best practices in special education. Okay, we want a larger voice, meaningful communication, and inclusive practices, and I'll get to that in a little bit, but especially more parent involvement. Okay? Navigating special ed is not easy. Having children is not easy, but especially when you have a child with a disability, it's not easy. So our goal is to educate and inform parents, not only parents, but staff and board members such as yourselves, within the district. Again, I am president. I work along with Denise Dunn, who is a former board member, as you all know, and Amy Page, who is also one of our board members. Highlighted in blue, Amy and I are the representatives at Oakland Schools PAC members. What we do. We do a lot of things. One of them is to advocate, and this year has been a very busy year, as you know. I've stood at this podium many times, voicing, advocating for the parents that contact me. We've met with Dr. Bernia. I meet regularly with Ms. Muir and her team to talk about special ed and what's important and what we need and our wants and needs. The ATP, or the Adult Transitions Program, which you are very well aware of, and parents have stood up here, voicing their concerns about that program. Parents contacted me because, parents contact me because they don't know where to go, they don't know where to start, and so I'm glad that PAC has become well-known, more well-known in our efforts and what we do. And so I've had parents contact me about the Adult Transitions Program, and I use my contacts that I have, and I think it's helping. Our voice is being heard. I've had parents contact me that are part of the Autism Spectrum Disorder Program, concerns that they've had, and so we've had meetings with Ms. Muir and also Dr. Bernia about those concerns. Okay? We advocate to strengthen our community and resources and information and ensure that special ed is considered in all areas. Special ed, as you know, in this district is very large. The number of students receiving services is very large, so we need to have a voice and be considered. We communicate. As a PAC, we send out a small newsletter to families of children who are, have, receive an IEP or receive services through an IEP or have a 504. We also have social media. We use Facebook and Twitter to communicate events in the community, and we celebrate. This year, I'm proud that this is our fifth year for our Shining Stars Award, and I'll get to that in a little bit. So we make sure that we definitely do celebrate our achievements. Some highlights that you are probably aware of is our Back to School Resource Fair that we held this fall at the Richardson Center. We were proud of the agencies, the community, and staff and admin from Wald Lake schools that showed their support of the Resource Fair, and this is something we want, we've discussed and would like to see annually, done annually, so we are going to work on that and probably just move around to different locations. This year, we've had parent-recorded webinars. We have found that the virtual mode is still working for us. Our goal is to get back to in-person meetings, but for right now, the webinars work for families. Childcare issues or what have you make it easier for parents, and I'm proud that we have recorded these, and they are on the website for parents to access at any time. And Unified Sports, which you are all aware of, at the high school level, we're very proud this year that soccer, basketball, and coming up is archery, which is, which will be new in the spring. My goal, our goal as a PAC, is to bring it down to the middle school level, Unified Sports, because it's had a huge impact at all of our schools. Inclusion Week, the students from Wald Lake Western mentioned it. Inclusion Week, this will be across the district, and it's coming up March 18th through the 22nd, so make sure you're watching that social media. We hope to post what's going on at all the different schools. So this is, it was announced that we will have Inclusion Week across the district. This might look different at every school, and that's okay. What that means to principals, what inclusion looks like for them. So principals were given resources. PAC developed some resources that we have shared those with Ms. Muir, who shared them with principals and admin for them to kind of run with it, what they wanted to do with Inclusion Week. I know, I work at Wald Lake as well, and in my school, and I know in other schools, committees were formed, and I'm part of my committee, and whether it be morning announcements or having Spirit Week or pep assemblies at the high school, again, which Wald Lake Western announced that they're having, there are great ideas out there, and I'm excited for Inclusion Week and for this to be an annual thing, so not only with our Back to School Resource Fair, but also Inclusion Week. It's really important, again, we are a large part of this district, so it's important that all students are included. So to touch on inclusion, I'm going to be very brief about this, but I just want to read a quote about inclusion. Inclusion is part of a much larger picture than just placement in the regular class within school. It is being included in life and participating, using one's abilities in day-to-day activities as a member of the community. It is being part of what everyone else is and being welcomed and embraced as a member who belongs. Inclusion can occur in schools, churches, playgrounds, work, and in recreation. So what I always hold on to is an, inclusion is more than just being invited to the table. It's being a participant at that table and having a voice at that table. To me, that's inclusion, and I included some pictures here. So we have integration, sure, you're invited to the table, but inclusion is actually being an active member, and we need to remember that every student has a civil right to a free and appropriate public education. One of the events we have coming up is our Shining Stars Award Ceremony. We are very excited about that. Save the date, April 30th. You all have an open invitation to attend at Wald Lake Central High School. This is, again, in our fifth year. We recognize outstanding individuals and student peers who support the special needs community within Wald Lake schools. Very proud of this event. It has grown. It started here, we presented at boards, we presented at the board meeting our awards, and now it has grown to be such that we are now hosting it at the high school level. And you can find the Shining Stars Award Ceremony, you can find you as board members or cabinet members, are welcome to nominate anyone who works and supports students with special needs. The link is in the Insider for staff within the district, but also to the community as well. You'll find that, the link for the Shining Stars Award Ceremony. This is our calendar for the year. So in December, like I said, we had a live webinar recording, and that worked on socialization and friendship relationships, so we were focused more at the middle school level for our students, because we kind of worked on leveling this year. Middle school students was our focus for our December meeting. January was our transition students, those post-high into adulthood, the services and resources that are available to them. In March, just recently, we had the Early Childhood webinar, again, for our young ones. Inclusion Week is coming up, our Shining Stars Award Ceremony in April, and then finally, we'll round it all out to our Back to School Resource Fair in August. So I thank you for your time here today. I heard you ask Wald Lake Western students, what can the board do for you? So I'm going to answer that question, even if you weren't going to ask me, but I like that. What I ask of you is that you be supportive of special education and especially inclusive practices. Like I said, we've been a voice up here about the ATP program, and that's something we're still very passionate about, so I ask that you be supportive of that. Help raise awareness of PAC. We're still working on that. You know, I still, I do have parents that contact me, but there's always room for growth, so we want to raise awareness. Again, you have an open invitation to any of our resources or events that we have, the Shining Stars, our Resource Fairs, the Unified Game. I hope to see you at the Wald Lake Western versus Central game on March 20th at Wald Lake Western. It is 12:30 in the afternoon, so that might be a little difficult, but we hope to see you there. And continue to inquire about PAC, what we're doing, what you're seeing across the district. I welcome that. Any questions?
Mr. Peterson?
Mrs. Casagrande.
Obviously, Mrs. has a passion of inclusion. I don't even know how to exactly to ask this question, and I don't know how you would kind of rate where you think you are, but that's kind of my crux of my question. So on a scale of whether it's, you know, low, medium, high, or, you know, red, yellow, green, or percentage-wise, where are you with how your PAC is feeling and your parents who are looking to have people understand inclusion or to, you know, get to where you want to go, right? I'm sure you have some ideas of, we're here now, we want to get here. Where are we? Are we 5%? Are we 10%? Are we, where are we?
I'm going to go with a low, medium, high. I just attended a conference last week, and I heard a statistic that I'm not proud of. Sure, you might have students that are included in the Gen Ed classroom, but they're not performing well, so there's work to be done there. There are teachers or staff members that are questioned, how comfortable are you working with students with special needs? And it's like 1 in 5 are comfortable, so those numbers are not very good, and I would say if we probably polled staff around the district, they may not be as comfortable as well. And this is a global, I think it's a work in progress everywhere. It's not just here in Wald Lake. There's room for growth, and I think starting with inclusion and building that understanding of what it is, what it looks like, will only help us get better at it and improve the practices. So like I said, it's coming from the state level that, you know, it's low as far as the being comfortable with inclusion and working with students with special needs. But as we need to remember, any student with special needs, it's on an individual, case-by-case basis, so like for my son, for example, I go back and forth whether or not all the time, whether he should be pushing into a Gen Ed classroom, you know, is he able to do that? Is that the appropriate place for him? So there's that difficulty as well, but I think room for growth, so I'm excited with these initiatives that we're starting with, so.
Thank you for your honesty. Sure.
Well, I do, Mrs. Hensley. First of all, I am very honored to have known and met Mrs. Hensley a long time ago through her son, Jackson. She is a tireless person when it comes to advocacy in this area. She has brought immense awareness to myself as a board member and before as to the plight and the challenges that our special needs community goes through every day. It's 24/7, it's 365 days a year. It doesn't change. It's very, very challenging. For those of us that have had healthy and prosperous children under those stents, it's hard to recognize what that is until you kind of dive into it a little bit, and I encourage everyone to dive in. You know, I'm a strong supporter. I love going to the Unified Games. It's magical to see the faces of those young people in this case.
May even bring a tear to your eyes.
Yeah, it's, if you don't come away from one of those games with a higher level, they make you feel... level, they make you feel like you can't feel any other way. So, I just, again, acknowledge Ms. Henzley. She has done just a fantastic job. It's a tireless job. It needs lots of help, lots of support. And so, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henzley.
Thank you.
So, we will move on to public commentary. So, just to remind everyone, we have our new-fangled computer up here that malfunctioned on us last month, so slightly. So, hopefully, we have that under control. Couple of things is that obviously stay within, try to stay within your three-minute timeframe. Please recognize, please identify who you are and where you reside in the community. That would be nice, and try to stay on, on topic. So, first tonight, Jackie Gerwin.
Hi, everyone. First, thank you to our Board of Education, our cabinet, all the staff members and community members here today. I just wanted to take a second to give you an update on what's going on with the Foundation for Excellence. My name is Jackie Gerwin. I have students in the district. I live in West Bloomfield, and I am the Executive Director of the Foundation for Excellence, which Mr. Siegler is also a trustee on. So, for those of you who may not be familiar with the FFE, we exist solely to support teachers and students across the district by providing extra funds for tools and resources within classrooms around Wald Lake. We've given over $1 million since 1991. We also provide scholarships for performing arts. We support the Adult Transition Program with funds for their coffee cart business. So, we do a lot of great things around the district. We're currently working through our lengthy pile of grant applications. We have a $40,000 budget and over $100,000 in asks. So, that's a pretty good indicator in how much money we still need to support our teachers around the district. These funds are used to support things like decodable books to help with literacy, tools for music and gym classes and things like that, STEM equipment, and sensory items for our special needs students. To raise these funds, here's my shameless plug. We are running our Tuition Expedition Raffle Program currently. Tickets are $50 each, or three for 100. The raffle is in just over a week. In the last five years, the winner has received over $10,000 in scholarship funds, and we can hold them for up to 20 years. So, even if your kids are little, that money will still be there when they graduate. And if you don't need scholarship funds, we do offer a cash payout. The IRS takes a nice little cut of that, though, just so you know. No surprise there. So, consider purchasing a Tuition Expedition Raffle Ticket. Those funds go to support things around our classroom and the, the mission of the Foundation for Excellence. There's information out there. We are also running, we are super busy right now. We are starting to sell, sell our kindergarten welcome kits. We are selling Wald Lake Western commemorative bricks, and we are starting to kick off a new program for Staff Appreciation Week, which will be unveiled once I get out of the cloud of tuition expedition. So, hopefully, you'll be hearing about that soon. We also have a golf scramble, which is our biggest fundraiser over the summer. So, if you are interested in golfing or know a business that might be interested in supporting us, please let me know. So, it's a very busy time in the FFE, and we are excited to start making our grant presentations. It's the best part of the year. So, hopefully, all of that will be coming soon. And in the meantime, I'm going to go with the, what can you guys do for me? Talk about us. Tell people about us. If people know who we are, that helps us get more support. If people don't know who we are, they're never going to support us. So, please talk about us. Let people know what we do around the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Wise, 23-year resident of Commerce Township. The bond issue vote for the Wald Lake Consolidated Schools is May 7th. Please vote yes for approval of the bond issue. I would like to thank the board, as all school board members supported a yes vote. This bond proposal is a main source of funding for kindergarten through 12th grade school capital projects. Everything has a life expectancy, and everything requires ongoing maintenance. Right now, Michigan public schools are funded by taxpayers on a per-student basis, depending on school, on the school district size and other factors. Overall, that funding has decreased in past years, leaving schools operating on slim margins. When a boiler breaks or a leak, a roof leaks, administrators must make difficult budget decisions. Bond money is used for building safety, security, and maintenance, and for facility renovations and reconfigurations. It is used for things like heating and cooling system maintenance and to repair parking lot potholes. If not approved, Wald Lake would not have the dollars to repurpose buildings and create a revised footprint in order to accommodate changes in enrollment. This money is not used for salaries or textbooks. Can homeowners without school-aged children benefit from voting to support K-12 school bond issues? Yes. Even community members without K-12 school affiliation can benefit from new and upgraded facilities. Better schools increase property values. I know this firsthand, as I've been a real estate appraiser for 45 years in residential appraisals. Businesses are more likely to invest in communities with strong schools. Communities can use school facilities for public events and programs unrelated to daily K-12 education. Examples include community theater, arts programming, senior citizens classes, general adult education, and group fitness activities. Communities are ultimately responsible for funding their public schools, and it is up to us to be responsible community members to decide what they, what we want to spend our investments on. Passing of this bond issue will not increase anyone's real estate taxes. If the bond vote fails, dollars must be diverted away from students. Please vote yes for approval of the bond issue. Thank you.
Good evening. Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. On March 1st, Governor Gretchen Whitmer proclaimed March 2024 as Women's History Month to uplift the achievements of women in Michigan history. Governor Whitmer stated, "Every month, but specifically this month, we acknowledge the great women of Michigan and around the world who have paved the way for current and future generations. Women are the backbone of our great state. We have proven through hard times that we can rise to the occasion and get things done. With the help of ambitious and committed women who want to see positive change, I will continue to advocate and stand on the front lines for women's rights and equality." Cheryl Bergman, CEO of the Michigan Women's Commission writes, "We are committed to working alongside Governor Whitmer, her administration, and like-minded individuals to proactively uplift her message. By staying true to the commission's values, we aim to address controversial issues head-on, celebrate accomplishments, and uplift others with our voices." Gloria Lara, the Civil Rights Commission Chair, said, "As a devoted ally of change, I am proud to work with Governor Whitmer to spark conversation about racial equality and improve diversity within leadership in the state. It is my goal to continue educating the masses and creating safe spaces for minorities and underrepresented individuals." Excuse me. Governor Whitmer has utilized her platform to implement change and challenge outdated laws to help Michigan women and families. Some of her accomplishments include the repeal of Michigan's antiquated 1931 abortion ban. She signed a package of bills to repeal the tax on essential women's products. This will drive down costs and save families from paying taxes on up to $4,800 of spending over the course of a lifetime. The Working Families Tax Credit was increased by putting an average of $3,150 into Michiganers' pockets and assisting more than 700,000 Michigan households. And access to affordable childcare was increased for 150,000 children. She signed the Reproductive Health Act and passed a law hindering employers from discriminating against women because they've had an abortion and invested in healthy moms, healthy babies. Governor Whitmer has ensured that representation is evident throughout the state. Currently, more than 974 women serve on boards, commissions, and full-time positions. What has all this to do with Wald Lake schools? I'll tell you. Well, nationally, 77% of teachers are women. I assume that ratio is somewhat similar in the Wald Lake school system. If you are supporting women, you are supporting teachers. Need I say more? Thank you.
Good evening. Ron Lippett, Commerce Township. My wife Denise and I are 20-year residents of the community. We have three daughters, two of whom have graduated from Wald Lake schools, including now our youngest, who is actually a sophomore at Wald Lake Northern. I've had the privilege of building a 30-year career in the staffing and workforce solutions industry. In short, it's, I help organizations get access to the talent they need the moment they need it. It's been a really rewarding career, and it might not surprise some of you, but today, almost a quarter of the U.S. workforce is employed in the STEM curriculum, STEM occupations. STEM being science, technology, engineering, and math. The pace of growth of this career channel is stunning, particularly since the pandemic. But, take a deeper look into the data, and it shows that while women are 47% of the workforce, they occupy only 25% of computer science jobs and a mere 15% of engineering. So, why the anomaly? Seems like an opportunity to me, not just for women or potential employers, but for the school systems and the school systems who are tasked with preparing young people to compete in an ever-changing world. So, what can be done? Multiple studies reinforce the notion that K-5 early education is critical to girls pursuing STEM at the high school and collegiate levels. While early-age girls perform equally to boys in math and science, gender bias, both at home and in school, remains a perilous factor to the data. Recent studies show that teachers, and more often, the curriculum itself, promotes stereotypes, which just inadvertently contribute to girls' lack of interest in pursuing STEM in higher education. One study discusses, discusses adjusting textbooks to profile more women leaders in STEM careers. The consistent exposure of K-5 children to women's achievements in STEM has a measurable impact on girls' interest in later education. This simple change at the curriculum level has been shown to produce more interest from girls in STEM concepts at the secondary level. And equally important, training teachers on the insidious impact of accidental bias has been shown to produce results. Multiple studies show teachers with pre-existing bias can impact how girls score in STEM curriculums. In closing, it's the role of school boards across Michigan to approve recommended curriculum and texts. As we enter a new post-pandemic world, the expectations of employers all over the world are evolving. I would encourage Michigan school boards, including Wald Lake, to examine carefully whether our graduates, most particularly young women, are prepared to compete for emerging careers, most especially STEM. The current STEM ratios might suggest we have work to do. Tomorrow is International Women's Day. Perhaps now is the moment to consider how Wald Lake schools can empower our daughters in STEM and leverage the incredible potential that has yet not been fully realized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Denise Lippett.
Good evening. My name is Denise Lippett. I'm a parent in Wald Lake schools with two recent graduates and a 15-year-old sophomore in Wald Lake Northern. I'm also a pediatrician in Oakland County in private practice. I had the opportunity to attend a recent Dr. Bernia Community Conversation at Commerce Township Library. It was a great event. Thank you very much. That day, I was, my interest was sparked. There was a mom and her son at the meeting, because there had been a school threat of violence the day before at one of our middle schools. That young man came to the meeting because he was terrified to go back to school. He was coming to seek reassurance that the school would be safe for him to come back to. Kudos to Dr. Bernia. He gave a caring and appropriate response. There was a robust discussion about the security assessments, police presence, as well as what the sheriff and the, well, all the security procedures had been and would be. All of these things are important, very important to keeping our children safe. As a pediatrician, I would lay on, layer on one more aspect to the discussion, and that surrounds responsible gun ownership. Some facts I have to share. Most of school shootings involve firearms obtained from the home of a parent or a relative. Half of all firearms are unsecured or unlocked in homes. Gun violence is now the leading cause of death in the United States for our children ages zero to 17. Attempted suicides by firearms is fatal 91% of the time. By contrast, attempts made by poisoning are fatal 3% of the time. One whole school bus full of children dies by gun violence every four days in the United States. As a pediatrician, I feel I'm an ambassador for safety, and firearm violence is preventable. Everyone in this room should know, or may already know, that a new law in Michigan went into effect February 13th. Among many other things, the law requires households with children in the home or which children might be reasonably expected to visit, such as grandparents or babysitters, to practice safe storage of their guns or face stiff penalties, including substantial fines and/or imprisonment. Our excellent Wald Lake School Board was ahead of their time and passed a Safe Gun Storage Resolution in October of 2022, promising to share resources like this and information like this with our community. I just thought now would be a time to evaluate sharing some of those updates. We all want to keep our families and our kids and our schools safe. Let's work to do just that. It's the law.
Good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Bernia and cabinet members. The Early Literacy Initiative, which was launched by the Michigan Department of Education in 2015, states that, quote, "If students are not proficient in reading by third grade, their chances of becoming proficient are minimal," close quote. So, I want to drill down on reading issues in K-3. What are the foundational reading skills? Conventionally, these have been defined as the alphabetic principle, phonics and decoding, word recognition, fluency. Under Lucy Calkins' Balanced Literacy Approach, foundation skills are defined as following ideas across text, seeing cause-and-effect relationships, predicting outcomes, making inferences. But, as Claude Goldenberg, professor of education at Stanford, said in regards to Calkins' approach, "No one could dispute the importance of these skills to successful skilled reading, but they're not foundational. The simple reason is that if you cannot read words on a page or screen fluently and with comprehension, the chances of being able to follow ideas across text, see cause-and-effect relationship and all the rest are zero," close quote. I understand that our school district is using Calkins' units of study, and they are seeing progress in phonics, but not in vocabulary and comprehension. My question is this. There may be improvement in phonics relative to vocabulary, but compared to what benchmark? In other words, are kids in the second grade or third grade reading at their grade levels? If not, and if they're below 50%, maybe the Calkins' approach to phonics is not sufficient. Same thing with vocabulary and comprehension. It seems to me that a better description of the different parts involved in reading would be the building of a house, rather than Scarborough's Reading Rope. Establish a firm foundation rather than trying to blend in too many aspects of reading early on. When I-ready scores are low, we are told that they're not necessarily accurate. But, they are accurate and reliable when they are high or improving? I would think you can't have it both ways. It is also asserted that kids from lower socioeconomic or minority groups are the reason overall reading scores are low. How did Mississippi dramatically increase their reading scores with some of the highest child poverty rates in the nation or charter schools for Black children in New York City? Our school district will be asking for a $250 million bond in a May election. The amount of money required to improve reading skills and the training of teachers seems to be minuscule compared to how much is spent elsewhere in the school district. I would like to see our district be a model for the rest of the state. A low reading score should be a thing of the past. If our curriculum is adequate, proof is in the pudding. Overall... Overall scores should reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Vashon.
Hello. My name is Liz Vashon. This is my props master, Steve Vashon. We are the parents of a freshman and a senior at Wall Lake Northern, and we have another child that graduated from Northern in 2022. I'm here tonight to start a conversation about the allocation of money that the proposed school improvement bond would provide should it pass. But first, a little show and tell. I want to show you an article of clothing that is 25 years old. It is mine. It is my favorite sweatshirt that I got from freshman year in college. It looks pretty bad, right? Clothes really aren't made to last 25 years. Do you know how old our band uniforms are at Northern? They're 21 years old. As a parent that has had three students in the marching band at Northern, their uniforms are not looking much better than this sweatshirt. Every year, miracle workers, AKA parent volunteers, piece these uniforms back together with safety pins, slip stitches, Velcro, glue, duct tape, and prayers. We have a parent that has a uniform repair kit on site at every event in case of a wardrobe malfunction. The stress I've seen on a teenager's face when their uniform is falling apart while they are marching is upsetting. It's embarrassing for them, and it should be embarrassing for our district. We have an exceptional band program that is known throughout the state of Michigan, but we are looking pretty shabby. Investing in new uniforms is really just a gesture in saying our band program matters. Our instruments are also very old and broken. For example, almost all of the tuba mouthpieces are duct taped on. Several reed instruments have broken keys, and we have about two acceptable performance euphoniums out of about 10. The rest are broken in some way. New instruments come at a high cost, but this is their equipment. Without proper equipment, we have no band. If we have no band, our district loses a key component of what sets us apart from other districts. Wall Lake Schools often brags about our band on district social media platforms. Positive district social media is what attracts families to our community. But if we are literally broken and ripped up, who would want to put their child in that program? Our band makes our district look good, and you can't deny that. Investing in the band program at the high school level brings lasting success to our students, which is a goal of our district and something that is highlighted in newsletters in our community. Our band program has inspired many alumni to continue their passion for music. I know an alum that at a Big Ten university who is in the marching band, basketball pep band, in a coed band service fraternity, all while building an actual rocket and excelling in classes such as thermodynamics. Band gave her a community, and that community actually started in our district. Our district can say she is a product of great programs and great teachers at Northern. So I'm going to repeat myself because I need you to hear this. Investing in new uniforms and instruments is really just a kind gesture in saying our band program matters. Our band program gives students a place to feel welcomed, accepted, creative, and be part of something greater than themselves. How could you not want to support this community of students with money from the bond? I could speak for hours on the lasting effects of Mary Helleberger's leadership. It is time the band receives the respect it deserves for the greatness it provides for our district. My question to you is why not just give the kids something acceptable to wear and to give them proper equipment for their program? Honestly, this shouldn't even be questioned. I am available to discuss the Wall Lake Northern Band Program with any of you should you want to continue to be inspired. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christine Titus.
Good evening. I'm Christine Titus from Commerce Township and a proud educator at Hickory Woods Elementary. I'm joined by many of my awesome colleagues tonight as we exhibit our support for each other and our colleagues across the district. These comments are my own, and I didn't realize when I was forming them that they coincided with others who have spoken this evening. First, I'd like to congratulate the six new Galileo leaders who will start their new amazing journey of professional and personal development. Galileo was one of the most rewarding experiences of my career, and I am very envious of their next two years of learning. Secondly, I'd like to recognize a group of educators that work tirelessly to support our students who require more support than we as general educators can give. As a teacher at Hickory Woods for the last eight years, I've seen the population of students who need special services grow immensely, particularly after the pandemic. Unfortunately, the number of professionals that can help meet these needs is not growing at the same rate. As a member of the building MTSS team, I work with colleagues who are split between several buildings, so that means their time is split as well in meeting the needs of the buildings and students they serve. I was happy to hear at a previous meeting that Special Services Assistant Superintendent Ms. Mirror and our Assistant Superintendent for Learning Services, Mrs. Kohansky, are working together to try and meet the needs of these students. To echo Ms. Van Lewen's remarks, I know our district is working relentlessly to hire professionals to support the growing number of students that need special services. Thank you for your efforts to secure professional staff to support the growing population of students who are in need of that extra support. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Kubik.
Good evening. Good evening. And great things can happen in school. I understand that. And Lakes Area Youth is a great group, too. I want to talk, why is the bond vote on May 7, 2024? It seems like it's going fast. By having a separate vote, it will cost taxpayers over $200,000. In 2019, on May 7, a bond of $316 million, the third-largest in Michigan's history, was approved. We were told at the time, this bond will not increase taxes. I kept asking how that could be said. I finally was told it was promised for one year only, no increase. Now I come to this bond. Wall Lake is asking for $250 million more, also being told it will result in a decrease of millage rate. Now, right now, it is 4.15. To go to 4.05, if this passes the bond, but what is not being told, if the bond is not passed, the rate of the bond would fall to 2.5, a decrease in taxes. If this bond passes, that will put over half a billion dollars on the taxpayers, a half a billion dollars on the taxpayers to be paid off in 2054. And if you're asking every five years for lots of money, it's going to really hurt the taxpayers. More houses have been built in the past five years, which also brings in more money. Why does the district need more money? With declining enrollment, buildings are under full capacity, lower student scores in reading and building being removed. How much has been saved by taking down the Wall Lake Community Ed Building seven years ago, where the transit adult special ed program was? Had a home, they had the adults, they had a home there. Adult ed was there, and many more programs were there. What have we saved by taking it down? There has been a lot of building taken down. I'm sorry, I'm losing my place. Get rid of, they get rid of the good stuff because the building in Wall Lake was 95 years old, and that was a fabulous building, and they took it down, and it sits an empty lot. It does not take a state-of-the-art building to make a student learn or a classroom full of technology. A good teacher can do much more than a shiny new building. She or he can teach them a hunger for learning, to be their best, to respect themselves and others, to dream big. There must also be rules and discipline which administrators support the good teachers. We already have the Safety and Security Bond we paid since 2003, which we have paid over $37 million. We are a very generous community, and I think this time you are asking for too much. And I hope that, I don't know if you can spend money on uniforms and instruments for kids. Spend it that way instead of a shiny new building. And why are you going to take down six more, whatever you call those, wings of Western? That was a well-made school, and the new one is interesting. Thank you.
Scott Peterson.
Good evening. I believe I'll probably be as popular as the last lady who was speaking. I am here also speaking about the bond. In 1972, I became a new teacher here in Wall Lake. In 1975, I became a new homeowner here in Wall Lake. I stayed in Wall Lake my entire career. I still live in the Wixom area, and I supported millages when I began as a teacher. I listened to what I heard, and that was, if you don't pay these higher millages, we aren't going to have a good school district. We aren't going to have good programs. I believed everything I heard. I voted for millages. I voted quite often, yes. Every time, well, I shouldn't say quite often. In the beginning, I voted yes all the time. I still support the basic idea of millages. I just don't support the millages that the Wall Lake Consolidated Schools have been putting in front of me. As a teacher, I was in the schools. I saw what was happening when we started these enormous millages. We were told, as I was one of the people in there, you know, put out your best ideas. Dream big. The sky is the limit. Ask for anything you want. And that's what was put before the people, these enormous bloated millages. And most of the public passed them. I think they believed what we've been told for 40 years, and that is, if you don't pass the millage, then we're going to lose kids. People aren't going to move in here. Well, Wall Lake has been passing millages, and we're losing kids. So why are we losing kids? If we're passing all this stuff, why is Wall Lake continuing to take students from other districts and bring them into Wall Lake? I would like to have somebody from the board tell me, how many students were accepted from other districts when you ran your open enrollment through, I think it was January, March, or January, February? I don't know if the people in the audience realize this. I didn't realize this for a while, but I found out when I was a teacher. I found out from all the teachers that I worked with that didn't live in Wall Lake, but they brought their kids to Wall Lake for school. And I say, why are you doing that? They say, oh, I can't afford to live in Wall Lake. Well, first of all, I didn't believe them because I was talking to female teachers who were the second income for their family. I was a male teacher who was the only income for my family. Amazing, I could live in Wall Lake. And they told me, we don't have to live in Wall Lake. We'll just bring our kids in there, and then we don't have to pay all those extra bonds. Our kids get to come in.
Can you close up your comments, please?
I have a little bit more to say. Thank you.
We have a three-bit limit, and the clock up there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We appreciate that.
I'm sorry. I guess I'll come back on another time.
Thank you. Lisa West.
Good evening. Apparently, the bond's a popular topic for tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Music Boosters with Wall Lake Northern. My daughter is actually in marching band, is here tonight. We have several of our Music Booster appear up here, too. So it may be March, but as a band rep, I'm already in the throes of planning for a Wall Lake Northern's band camp for this summer. In the fall, our community will be gathering for Friday Night Lights, cheering on the football team and watching the marching band cheer and dance team perform at halftime. Sports and music often bring people together, which is why I'm asking you to please include the Wall Lake Music Department's needs for funding in whole on the upcoming bond. I am asking this not just on behalf of Northern, but our whole district. Families seek our district, whether to live here or apply a school of choice, because of how well-rounded we are. Generations of families gather to hear our students perform at musicals, concerts, such as our outstanding collage concerts, parades, and games. Students partaking in the music program range from our highest achievers in honors, AP, capstone program, and college classes to those who struggle academically but find success in their musical talents. I ask you to continue to support the incredible staff that are serving our students, but also support our current and upcoming students by providing what they need so that our students can continue to serve our community. I encourage you to touch base with music directors at each school to determine what the costs of their needs are specifically. However, I do know some of the specific needs are new school-owned instruments, which are at least 20-plus years old and getting to the point of being irreparable. Any uniforms for Northern's marching band, which are over 20 years old, purchased when the school was built. Regarding uniforms, which I've witnessed, as Liz had said earlier, to purchase new uniforms, they're $700 each, and we need at least 250 uniforms to cover that cost, which comes to a total of $175,000. We're unable to purchase new uniforms, and while we use the most gentle care with our current uniforms, they're deteriorating and are unable to be replaced as dialysis styles have changed. So we can't even replace one uniform that might need it. We need to replace the whole thing. Please understand that these are not just wants but needs. I implore you to please include the Music Department's full range of needs on the bond, both in specific wording and financially, to not only support our students and staff, but make our district competitive with our neighboring districts. So you asked earlier what people want. I'd like you to please take care of our Music Department. Our children deserve it. Our staff deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we move on in our agenda to administrative commentary? Dr. Bernia.
Well, we're going to open the floor with Dr. Lons.
Nothing at this time. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Mirror.
Nothing at this time, Dr. Bernia.
Mr. Chatfield.
Just, I won't elaborate on the bond work, but just to know that in the board newsletter this weekend, you will have a bond report update that has some really fantastic-looking photos of some of the progress of the team buildings on Western.
Mr. Russo.
Nothing tonight, Dr. Bernia.
Mrs. Omer.
Just wanted to comment. I was glad that Teri Lust received and was here for the meritorious budget award. I've been appreciative of the support that she's been providing and obviously all the great work that she's done here at Wall Lake. So it's great to see her tonight and for her to get a well-deserved award.
I would like to use my time tonight to first thank Hospitality House. Last night, they named us their Community Partner of the Year. Hospitality House obviously is a true partner. So we volunteer there, we contribute to them, but then we also benefit from their services. They support students throughout our district with their Weekend Backpack Program, with the services that they provide to families, and so I value their partnership and treasure the relationship that we have with Hospitality House. So I'm honored to have been there last night with some board members and some colleagues to accept that award. I'm also very excited to build off of a comment that was made a little while ago. The Galileo Institute for Teacher Leadership has existed for more than 20 years now, and Wall Lake Consolidated Schools is one of the founding districts of that project. And we have a long history of sending out some of our best teachers to receive training and development, to come back and grow their leadership capacity to help their schools. And the idea of fostering a sense of teacher leadership is something that Oakland County led the way on more than 20 years ago, and Wall Lake was a key partner in that. And so I'm so proud to, again, participate in that and really proud of the teachers that are going to receive that recognition. Congratulations once again to Mrs. Lust and the business team. And then I wanted to, I'm going to go, I'm going to ask Mr. Chatfield, and I'm going to put you on the spot. Nudge him, Nick. The Early Childhood Center recently received an award, and I cannot recall the name of the organization, but Mr. Chatfield, if you could just summarize that?
The Construction Association of Michigan recognized the Early Childhood Center as one of 10 outstanding construction projects throughout the state of Michigan. We were up for Project of the Year. However, the train station downtown did receive that, but that is the, that's the company we're in with the Early Childhood Center. So received a lot of great comments and accolades, so very proud of that.
So it's just, it's a great time to be here, and yeah, thank you. It's just a wonderful time to be here, and I appreciate all the recognition that we received really since our last board meeting. That's it from me, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll move on to board commentary, and we'll start with Mrs. Fernandez. Mrs. Casa Grande.
Just a couple. For those of you, I saw all of the attachments to the district update, and one of the things that's on there is the rail. They, we actually have They, we actually had, so at the PTSA council meeting, which I attended on behalf of the board this last week, we had some members from the rail there. So take a look at that on the district webpage in our district update. Every year, they're looking for volunteers. And one of the things that they mentioned was View Fest at the Detroit Zoo coming up. And one of the things they're going to try to tackle is to break a world record trying to educate people on how to use available resources to fight the opioid crisis that we're in. So I just wanted to put a plug in for that. And I also wanted to thank Ms. Davy and Ms. Shore. I met with them as the head start and early childhood rep for the board, the liaison. So I spent some time with them and all the things that are on later on in our agenda. I did sit and talk with them. And I am always thoroughly impressed whenever I go in a building and talk with somebody or really they're just to support and to listen. But you do walk into that building, the award you just talked about, I mean, it is amazing. Just the fact that, that it is, it's bright. It has chairs and equipment and restrooms and everything that is, you know, just for children, right? And there's space. There's space for them to move. But ultimately, it comes down to our staff. Our staff that cares so deeply, that works so hard. And just the hour that I spent talking with them, you can tell they're just so proud. And one of the things in particular that I just wanted to share with everybody is Ms. Davy said that they are so proud that, you know, sometimes we get people come in as preschool and they are within our district. Sometimes they're not. And, and they feel very proud that we can start with pre-K education and people want to then come into our district. And it's just wonderful to see the excitement. And we, we have a waitlist, I believe, right, Dr. Bernia? So the fact that it's, it's the building, but it's the people. And we have to continue to remember that. So I just wanted to say thank you to them. And if there are any questions, I'm sure Ms. Kohansky isn't here tonight, but maybe I can answer them. But hopefully, we won't have a lot of questions. Thanks.
Ms. Tice?
I just wanted to, I guess, put in, just for awareness, that March is National Reading Month. So I know, you know, someone shared tonight, just even some statistics on reading. If kids aren't able to read by third grade, you know, it's, it's very likely that, you know, they're going to struggle with reading their entire lives. And so just being able to teach students how to read is just so, so important because if you can't read, you can't do your story problems in math and you can't read your history textbook. So it's just so, so important to learn to read. And I think also just instilling in our kids a love for reading. So I know some of the, I know schools are doing things with mystery readers and things like that. But I just think it's really important too for kids just to be read to at home, to hear that good model of reading. So I would just encourage you guys to be doing that with your children, to instill a love for reading in them.
Mrs. Levin?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I wanted to direct my comments tonight to kind of the board functioning. I was disappointed that the retreat that we were maybe going to have this next Saturday was canceled because of scheduling conflicts. And then I was slightly relieved to find out that we were going to have a discussion at the end of tonight's board meeting to discuss at least part of what we were going to talk about at the retreat that we are not having on Saturday. And then that discussion was tabled. My impression is it was tabled because there wasn't consensus on what direction we were going to go with things. And I'm disappointed that we, we make a little bit of progress, but then we stop just before we're able to have meaningful discussions as a board about things. And it's not controversial things. It's things like, what kind of committees do we need? And what kind of extra work are we going to do as a board to kind of move the ball forward? And I feel like it's stagnant. And I'm really hoping in the coming months that we will find a way, either as a board or as smaller groups, to continue to move the ball forward, to have these important discussions and not wait for everything to be sunshine and roses. Because maybe that's the reason why we need to have the conversation, because it's not all sunshine and roses. So I really hope that we can get beyond just being cheerleaders and really start to focus on meaningful work to, to answer the questions that the community has of us. To, to sit down and figure out, what are we doing? How are we going to help? And how are we going to improve things? How are we going to make sure that there's some sort of a liaison with finance? Or to, to work on things with the superintendent evaluation? If we don't ever make time to have the discussions, we can't ever have meaningful improvement and, and change. And so I, I hope that as a board or as smaller groups, we can find a way to continue moving forward and not just keep canceling things. Thank you.
Mr. Seigler?
I remember when we started the Galileo Consortium. I actually was at the first dinner many, many years ago. And watching the faculty come in that night was, reminded me of watching children come into kindergarten for the first day with the excitement and energy and inspiration that they had and what was going to be in front of them. And we've had that every year that I can remember going forward. I want to congratulate those that are starting that and going on to that next phase because you are future leaders. You could be future administrators. You know, we, after we had the Galileo Consortium, we started the Aspiring Principles Academy. So there's great potential. And I want to thank you for all take, for those of you that are here that are taking that next step. Last night, I had the pleasure of going to Oakland School's Technical Campus for a present, presentation. As a parent and as a grandparent, I, you know, we always want what is best for our children. But we also have to realize that there are many children that are not going to go to a college, are not going to go to a university. And we have programs within Oakland County that allow students to start while they are in high school, to learn trades, to learn hand, learn hands-on, share time cooperatives between the Oakland Technical Centers and their home schools with transportation provided to and from. I was very impressed by everything that I saw last night. It actually made me want to be a young child again because, as I joked with Mr. Peterson, you know, I was watching the welding and watching the computer skills building and the electronics labs and everything else and things that maybe, you know, I tinkered with as a child but never pursued going forward. These are students. These are 16 and 17 and 18-year-old children who are learning a trade, who are learning a skill, who are building a house, who are building robots, who are involved in STEM programs, both men and women, that are absolutely phenomenal. And they are, they are part of our future. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And I have brought information for all of the board members to look at. Again, if you have children who are thinking of trades, it's something to honestly look at and to talk to your high school counselors about because the opportunity is there. And they also have some programs for, one of the programs is for students who start basically at the end of the 10th grade year. But if they are in the program for two years, they have what they call Grade 13. Grade 13 allows them to go to a community college for classes at no cost. So it is something, again, to think about and to, you know, we need to inform our compute, our community. We need to inform our students and give them the opportunity. And if we start early, it will benefit all of them in the long run. So thank you.
Ms. Kaplan?
Okay. Couple comments I will address. I have, Mr. Seigler and I were both at that Oakland School Board meeting that was at OSTC campus. And I will address that a little bit here. There is a, there was an article and a study that has been released. It does come out annually. It basically states, see which Michigan high schools send most graduates to college. And if you scroll down, there's obviously all the state schools. The state average, believe it or not, is 38.2% go on to advanced education or higher education. In our particular area, our three high schools, probably in the mean, Northern at 60.1%, Western at 54.3%, and Central at 48.4%. Now, those are defined at either one to two or four-year college out of high school. So what does that mean? And I've had people ask me, so why should I, why should I be concerned about that? Or why should I think about that? Well, just think that even at the 60% plateau, there's 40% of our students that are potentially leaving high school with maybe little or no skills or skill building at that point. So it's very important. And you look at some of your higher economic districts. For instance, Birmingham, 85% go on to advanced education. And of course, those that have more challenging areas, obviously it's much lower. So thus the state average. This is not something new. This has been ongoing for 20 years, 25 years. And it ties directly and indirectly into things like OSTC. And it also ties into our future bond ideals. So, and going to OSTC, I've been there several times. I sit on one of the advisory boards and have for a number of years. Great programs. It's just, it's just, it's really mind-boggling to see what goes on. The downside is there's four campuses throughout the county that services 28 school districts. So I imagine that you have one class that, on average, about 18 students. So if you do the math, there's not a lot of opportunities there. So the actual enrollment as of last night throughout the campuses is 3,000 students. So if we take our school averages from this most recent study, and this is available, it was on Bridge Michigan, it was on M-Live, and it was on other outlets. It's readily available. I'm sure, Dr. Bernia, we could make it available. If you'd like to take some time to scroll through all the, the school districts. But with 28 schools servicing their programs, the problem is there's, it's very limited opportunity. Great opportunity, but limited. So one of the values, and even our local campus here over on Beck Road, which has been with us for quite a while, we have seven school districts that service that campus. So just imagine, do the math again, 18 and how many? So for us, a larger district, sometimes, you know, you could say that we're slightly penalized. For a lower income or a smaller district, they have a little bit more opportunity in some cases. Is it enough opportunity? Absolutely not. So part of the even bond initiative for us going forward right now is to repurpose some of our high school facility areas. And that means putting and, and building and revamping computer labs, modeling labs, could be medical-related programs. These are all part of what a bond is. It's a really a big part of what a bond is. So just by the numbers, we're not failing our kids. We're just not giving them enough opportunity. The other side of OSTC is these programs generally don't kick in into your junior and a senior problem. For some of us who have been in this type CTE or vocational programs for a long time, the kids need to be able to start sooner in these programs. To be, to be able to be, first of all, given that opportunity. And number two, you, if you're sitting here listening or here visiting with us, you have to get your kids involved really soon. You can't wait until they're a junior. By that time, the numbers are all past you. So you have to come to your school counselors here early on and start that planning. Eighth grade, in all honesty, is a good, is a good start point. They have 17 programs alone right here. And just to use an example, when I came on the board, we approved, I think, one of only two classes that I've been on here since we approved new classes. And one of them was for a cybersecurity class at Wall Lake Northern. And that being said, as I always said to myself, well, we have OSTC that provides that. They have a cybersecurity program, right? But there's not enough seats for the demand. And in today's world, I, you know, I've kind of preached this on the soapbox a few times in my days so far on the board, that there, there, these opportunities and these type of avenues are very, very positive. We're running out of plumbers. We're running out of pipe fitters. We're running out of welders. My generation is retiring at a high rate. Sooner or later, you're going to pick up the phone and you're going to say, hey, can you wait? I'm going to be there in about three or four months. That's what it's going to come down to. So these are important programs. They do a great job, but they can't service really the demand. So we, as a board, as a school district, has to look for other options and avenues. So our new bond request, a lot of that is really earmarked that way. So with that, I'll thank you and we'll move on to our consent agenda. So in our consent agenda is approval of minutes, proposed February 1st, 2024, regular meeting. Personnel recommendations, new hires, retirement, and resignations. Financial reports, January 2024. Disbursements in the amount of $18,904,502. Balance sheet and statement of revenues and expenditures, unaudited, and investment schedule. And our Head Start Directors Report.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Mrs. Casa Grande?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Can we take a vote, please? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven, zero. We'll move on to bid awards and I will turn it over to Dr. Bernia.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. The first recommendation is for a new stadium scoreboard at Western High School in the amount of $200,474 from the 2019 Bond Fund to Great Lakes Power and Lighting. The Western scoreboard quit working several times last fall, requiring emergency repairs. And soon, we will be unable to obtain replacement parts. Great Lakes is on site currently and is the contractor that gives us the best opportunity to have a functioning scoreboard for the start of the fall sports season.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Seigler?
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award for the 2019 Bond Projects Western High School scoreboard replacement for $200,474.07 from the 2019 Bond Fund.
Do we have a conversation?
Mr. Peterson?
Mrs. Levin?
I asked a couple of questions behind the scenes and just wanted to re-ask them here publicly so that the community can know the answers. I asked, what about the other schools? So maybe Mr. Chatfield can answer, how are things at the other schools? And what about replacing their scoreboards?
Certainly. So Wall Lake Central received, they purchased and we installed a new scoreboard there 12, 13 years ago, fully digital scoreboard at the time. That did require the replacement of the feeder lines and the communication lines under the football field. And that scoreboard still functions exceptionally well. We don't anticipate any need to replace or even spend significant repair dollars on that scoreboard anytime in the near future. The Wall Lake Northern scoreboard is original, so it's over 20 years old. But in speaking with Mr. Swineheart, it still is fully functional, works well. But we will have to consider replacing that scoreboard sometime in the not-too-distant future.
Do we have any other? I, I do have a comment. This is one of those areas where I want people to understand that we originally had slated for Western light updates through the stadium. I know personally, I had visited Wall Lake Western a couple of times last year for boys varsity soccer in the fall. And I was somewhat astounded at the lack of light. As a former coach of a field sport, I was actually very surprised that it seemed to be very dark. And originally, this is a situation with the scoreboard that- And originally, this is a situation with the scoreboard that has come up, the scoreboard was working last fall when I was there. So that's something that's changed. And I guess I have to ask that question, is, we're basically bumping aside for the time, the lighting, in favor of repairing this immediate scoreboard, and, and I have to ask the question, is, did we not have, or do we not have sinking fund money, which is one of the reasons we've, we have that fund, specifically when something like we have at home, where, yeah, we might have a leak in the roof, but it also turned on the heater, on the heat, and obviously, the furnace didn't work. So guess what? Now we got two problems at one time. So how did we decide, or how do we decide, other than, yes, the scoreboard doesn't work right now? How do we fill that, that, that bill?
So when bids were awarded for the new addition at Western High School, and it's, it's been several years, but you'll recall at that time, the, the awarded amount of bids exceeded the budget that we had originally established for the Western addition by a significant amount. We had to do some considerable value engineering, of which we shared some considerations with the board at that time in preparation of the bid recommendations, which were ultimately approved. But a lot of those value engineering pieces included, included scaling back the scope of work. So we did things like reduce the amount of roofing that we're going to replace at Western, remove, reduce the amount of paving, and the, the stadium lighting was one of those value engineering pieces. It was put on the table until we get to a point where we can see if we have enough money to include that in the final Western construction project. Now, keep in mind, we have three phases of construction at Western, so we will have opportunities to reconsider that. But that was a consideration that was incorporated into the bid recommendations and approved by the board at that time. So we, we are not supplanting the stadium lighting with the scoreboard. We just simply had, prior to this, made a decision not to proceed with the stadium lighting, pending additional financial information on the Western project. We also, frankly, did not anticipate having to spend money on the Western scoreboard, but we are in a situation now where we need to. And so we have a contractor on site who has the ability to obtain consortium pricing on a new scoreboard. This will allow us to most expeditiously get a contractor at a very reasonable price who can get this equipment ordered. We already have a contract with them, and with, with all, any luck, we will have that operational for the fall support season. So those were two different pieces. It, it certainly could be funded with sinking funds, but that would require us to start a whole new contract process with the contractor, and, and that would take additional time.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments? Ms. Levin.
So maybe I'm a little slow on the uptake, but I didn't realize that the lighting at Western wasn't being done, or really was being done, but I'm surprised to hear that it's not good. You know, one could maybe argue it's a safety issue. I don't know, but there's money laying around there that maybe could be used for something like that. But I would have to ask then, going forward, if there's a way to put lighting at that stadium, a, you know, a state-ranked football team, I would say, let's start figuring out how we make that part of something sooner rather than some unknown time later.
Certainly. And, you know, in recognition of the fact that we aren't going to be replacing those fixtures in the near future with new LED lighting, and that was, that was the primary purpose of that, was to upgrade to LED lighting, we are going to be annually replacing all of the lamps that are inoperable.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, Ms. Catfield, or Ms. Casagrande.
I don't really want to belabor the whole lighting thing, but what I, I guess I do want to say is that I didn't hear Mr. Chatfield or Dr. Burney say that we had insufficient lighting at Wall Lake Central. I heard that you were at, and I'm not saying that your opinion doesn't count, Mr. Peterson, but I'm hearing you saying that you didn't think we had enough lighting. I, I don't think that it was just because we didn't have enough lighting. Am I missing something?
Ms. Casagrande, can I reply to that? So I remind you, if you go back and look in the original bond worksheets for the 2019 Bond, the stadium lighting was noted as one of the entities. So I will refer back to that, not just Mr. Peterson's judgment.
Correct, but I don't think it was that it was insufficient, as in, we had a huge safety issue, correct?
No, it, it's all, it's all functional, but they are all metal halide lamps, which are old technology, they burn out more frequently.
Right.
Upgrading to LED lighting is certainly desirable for both operational integrity and, and energy efficiency. And, and we certainly want to do that, and we will certainly consider.
Absolutely, and we want to do both of them. We're just in a situation where something is broken and something is not, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just let me make it clear that I am not opposed to the scoreboard as a whole.
You need one.
So just so you're, just so that that's clear, thank you. So any additional? Ms. Fernandez?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask this in the next item, which is a significantly higher dollar amount, but I just want to see, Mr. Chatfield, if you can help confirm my understanding, that when a bond fund application is submitted, there's some level of detail around what sorts of things it will cover, and, and when it's voted on, then, you know, like, that's, that's the bond funds that we're drawing from every time we have these conversations. What level of discretion or ability to move or change the spend that has been approved and voted on by the community? What level of discretion and ability to move things around do we have? Are there, you know, like, whether it's lighting versus scoreboards, they're kind of in the same category? What happens to, like, furniture versus toilets? Or, I mean, like, what are the limitations of keeping things in the same, in the same category, or what flexibility do we have?
Sure. The actual bond language simply spells out that we are asking for permission to make renovations, or building additions, or construction, and, and that's, so any, any scope of work that falls within those definitions can be approved. The attached worksheets that Mr. Peterson's referring to, where it is listed, are, are not actually what was voted on. Those are the supporting documents, but we do have the discretion to move pieces as long as they are consistent with the scope of work that was approved in the bond language.
If I can ask just one more follow-up question. Do we have the same discretion not to, not to proceed with something that was maybe in the worksheets or a part of the bond fund because it's no longer necessary, or it's for a school that may or may not still be around? I mean, like, do we, can we choose not to use funds?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Moves for a vote, please? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. It's six one. I'll turn it over to Dr. Burney.
Dr. Burney? I apologize, but could you clarify who supported that motion? Thank you.
Are you set, Mrs. Sol?
I am all set, thank you.
We do what the boss says. We're going to go back to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Burney. The next recommendation is for new and replacement furniture for the Western High School Academic Wing Edition, as well as replacement furniture for Central High School, which is on, on the schedule for this summer's project, and a few items at six other schools to meet changing space utilization needs. This purchase includes student furniture, as well as classroom, office, cafeteria, and staff furniture and furnishings. And just as a reminder, the replacement of old furniture with flexible and collaborative furniture was a key feature of the 2019 Bond Program, and that's what this represents.
Mr. Peterson?
A motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award of 2019 Bond Program furnishing Central and Western High Schools, and additional needs for four million, one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-six and sixty-five cents from the 2019 Bond Fund.
Support.
Support. Do we have any commentary? Ms. Levin.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. So going back to a comment that was made, I think, by Mr. Peterson a few minutes ago, alluding to the fact that we may, with the next bond, if it passes, reallocate some space in at least some buildings, maybe Central, maybe not, to perhaps do some more CTE programming. Does the furniture being purchased account for the fact that some of that building won't be used the way it's used now? Or is some of this furniture going to be wasted, extra furniture?
It does, actually. One of the things that we, we did with the administration of Central's, went through and identified exactly the rooms that are, that are scheduled to be used in, in the next school year. So this, the purchases for Central are not a one-hundred percent furnishing of every single classroom. It's only for the classrooms that we know are going to be utilized over the next couple of years.
Ms. Fernandez?
I have an immediate question with, as a follow-on to that. So does that, that means that there's more to come specifically for these two schools?
There certainly will be more for Western, because we are in phase one of a three-phase program at Western, so there will be some more purchases for Western. There may be some minor purchases at Central, again, depending on the outcome of the May election. And, and as we have done, as we've had to do each year since, since the first year of the Bond, we've added some small additional purchases for classroom utilization changes or program changes within buildings that need different furniture than what they originally obtained with their bond purchase.
Thank you. May I ask a couple of follow-on questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Fernandez.
So I think in reading some of the detail and asking some questions in ahead of this meeting, I believe that there is some portion of these funds, and it's a minor portion, right, that, that fits the category that Mr. Peterson talked about, which is retrofitting or repurposing, or doing some creative new things. But in general, you know, three point nine of the four point one million, or the lion's share of that, are those categories of general furnishings, right, that you described for Western and Central? Is that, that's fair?
That's correct. That three point nine is for Western and Central.
Okay, and I think, I, I think that also is a fair representation, that with about twenty-four hundred students in those two schools, that's about sixteen hundred dollars per student worth of furniture. Is that, am I correct?
I suppose if you want to, yeah, if that's, if that's a calculation one makes, that that certainly would be applicable. However, again, there, this includes staff furniture, this includes all the office furnishing, cafeterias, media center, there's a, quite a bit of furniture that actually won't be used for student desks or furnitures in the classroom.
And can you tell us what happens to the old furniture? I don't know if it's as regular as the band uniforms, but perhaps there's some things that are pretty bad off and some things that aren't so bad off.
Yeah, so the, the, the process we have used over the past several years is to include the, the purchase, if you will, and purchase and removal of existing furniture in the moving contractor's contract. So they, in their bid for the moving, they determine what the value of the furniture that they are going to get, that they're going to take away from the district is, and in theory, that will reduce their bid price to us, and then it becomes their property and their responsibility for disposition.
Okay, thank you for that. I think I had just one more question about that. I, I heard something new. I learned, I always learn something new when I met these things, and that is that this was a key, that the whole furnishings was a key part of, you know, the, the bond as it was presented to the community back in 2019, and I clearly wasn't on the board at the time. So, and I know that we've passed other big amounts of dollars for middle school furnishings and other things, but we're five years in, and so, you know, I, I don't, I had never heard that that was a key priority, and that the public, you know, actually requested that, and I'm, is it, have we just been doing this at this volume for five years, you know, and we're getting toward the end of the same token? You said this is a phase one, so I'm, I'm, I'm wondering how much more is left in furnishings?
Yeah, let me clarify. This is phase one for Western High School. This is actually phase five of the Bond Program. So we have, this is the fifth year that we've made significant furniture purchases, replacement furniture purchases, and if Mrs. Kohansky were here, she could elaborate, but it was identified early on that, you know, some best instructional practices depend on the classroom layout. This furniture helps, let's call it declutter and simplify the classroom rather than having straight rows and, and lines of desks and chairs. And, and frankly, on the cabinet visits that we've gone on with Dr. Burney, boy, it is evident. You just, you just see evidence every time we walk into a classroom of how, how much more flexibility it, it provides a teacher in the classroom. So I, it, it was a key feature of the Bond, and I think it's proven to be a really valuable feature of the Bond.
Okay, thank you for your answers and for your patience with me for the questions.
So we'll move to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
And pass seven zero.
Six one.
Six one. So, six one. All right, our next agenda item is 2023, 2024 Budget Amendment, and I'll give that to Dr. Burney.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Sol.
As you may recall, in terms of the budgeting process, in June, we spent, Mrs. Bliss spent a considerable amount of time going in detail through what the budget was supposed to be for the original budget. Sometimes there's obviously lots of assumptions that take place when you go through that process. This is the second step, if you will, in not only amending the 23, 24 budget, but setting the stage for the 24, 25 budget. There's a lot of road to go through, if you will. In the documents that were sent to you, of course, is a standard resolution, which everyone always says, boy, there's not a lot of detail there, but behind that very summarized function level, if you will, as prescribed by the state, is a lot of detail that goes into that. It's just essentially taking those assumptions that were taken in June, moving them forward to what we know currently, and then we will also be presenting to the board again in June, a final amendment, but this is the next step in that. There's three documents in your particular package that was the resolution that's contained in the board packet that's being asked for you to consider for adoption. There was also the original assumptions that were in the June budget, and then laying those beside the assumptions that have changed that are incorporated into this budget, and then a little bit more level of detail, trying to explain some of the variances at a very high level that were included in there as well. So that's exactly what we have for you, and if there's certainly any questions, be happy to entertain those. Do the best of my ability.
Mr. Peterson? I think we need a motion first.
Yeah, Mrs. Casagrande.
Did you want to do the motion? Go.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to amend the 2023, 24 budgets as presented.
Support.
Do we have any comments?
So, thank you very much for also entertaining my questions ahead of this meeting around the budget and the details that were presented. I appreciate that. I don't doubt at all that there is a lot of detail, and we certainly see more than is in the budget amendment, but I would just like to request, I would enjoy seeing more of that level of detail, so in the future amendments. I know amendments are a part of, part of the way it functions around here, but I appreciate knowing that there are things that are being covered by a grant or where the funds are coming from, but I'd like to, a little bit more detail around which grants, so that we can help direct and align, you know, and, or give some thought into the allocations and, and alignment of some of those funds that are being used. So thank you for the detail, I'd love more.
Any additional comments? We'll move to a vote, please. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass seven zero. Next budget agenda item, resolution, board review of Head Start Program. Dr. Burney?
In accordance with federal Head Start performance standards, our district, the governing board, the Board of Education is the governing board of the district's Head Start Program. To comply with all federal contract regulations, our Head Start Program is requesting the board review the items listed below. All items were approved by the Head Start Policy Committee. The request for review includes a reimbursement policy, recruitment policy, selection process, enrollment process, delegate, delegate monitoring review, and policy council meeting minutes. That is for your consideration.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, Lakes Area Youth, Lakes, you good? Lakes Area Youth, Youth Ascended Assistance Volunteer Board Members. Dr. Burney?
I'm going to swing it over to Dr. Lons.
Thank you, sir. Lakes Area Youth Assistance, or LEA, as we heard earlier today, is a prevention program within- prevention program within the Oakland County Circuit Court. Youth Assistance has been in Wall Lake since 1960. Their mission statement is to strengthen youth and families and prevent and reduce incidents of juvenile delinquency, neglect, and abuse through volunteer involvement. In keeping with established bylaws, LEA has requested our board approve their 2024 volunteer board members. And on a personal note, as is Ms. Van Lewen mentioned, I work with them, with her team, very frequently, almost weekly, and the support that they give to our students and to our families is integral in the work that I do to ensure the success of Wall Lake Consolidated School District. So I want to thank their team, their board, and everyone that works within that organization for their level of support. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Levin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Lakes Area Youth Assistance 2024 volunteer board members as presented.
Support.
Do we have any comments? Ms. Kaplan?
I just want to say to Dr. Lons and to Mrs. Van Lewen, Lakes Area Youth Assistance is so overwhelmed right now with students and what's happening in the district. So all these women and men that are on this board are working diligently to try to help these students with limited resources. And our caseworker, who cannot be here, literally has one of the highest caseloads in Oakland County, and it's, it's a battle. So please support LEA and support all of our staff and students while we work with these kids. Thanks.
Any additional comments? We'll move to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven zero. Move on to our next board agenda item, board policy review. Dr. Bernia?
You have, board members have an updated set of policy updates for the very first reading. We'll bring these back to the April 4th meeting for action from the board. And I speak for the entire policy committee when I say we look forward to your questions.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Mrs. Cosgrove.
When is your next policy committee meeting? I know sometimes if we have comments, you like us to try to get them in so you can discuss them.
We will meet before the April 4th meeting. I'm not sure when it is on the calendar, but we have a couple of weeks for you all to read and review. And then, you know, coming, coming right back from spring break, you know, in that period of time, like, going into spring break, coming out of spring break, we'll meet, answer any questions that the board has, and then be ready to come back for action.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the last agenda item, board policy administrative, administrative regulations update. Dr. Bernia?
I want to let the community know, our work with GND Associates has begun, and that required a significant upload of documents, and so we needed to update our org chart to reflect changes that I've made since I became superintendent. This does not require an action or a vote from you, but just keeps us accurate in the information that we provide to the firm who's going to support us through strategic planning.
And with that, at nine oh nine, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.